Let's call the meeting order.
He said this today because she's out.
Call and roll, please. Anybody calling the roll?
David.
Mrs. Kehum.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Rickman. Mr. Monk. Ms. Collins.
Quarantin' established. Next agenda item is item three, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, item number four, ladies and gentlemen, this is the portion of our meeting where we invite citizen comments. There's any citizen comments, please step to the mic, state your name and address, address your comments to the Chair of the Board, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens' comments? Oh, right here.
Hello, my name is Erica Bradberry, and my address is 34770 Pisces Drive, Apartment A, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48310. And Mike has perfect timing. I'm going to ask him to join me up here for the comments. Hello, everyone, my name is Erica Bradberry. I am the Prevention Program Manager at Care of Southeastern Michigan. We are a substance use prevention, recovery, and treatment nonprofit in Frazier, Michigan. And I'm here with Mike Schickdell, and we are here to announce to everyone that we are working with a group of individuals that are wanting to restart the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families. The Coalition's mission is to prevent and reduce substance use in our community through education and awareness activities. And our goal is to create a safe, healthy community by building and supporting strong families and neighborhoods. So we're here to invite all of you in this room to please join us. We've had a couple of information meetings that we've held so far, and we're looking in the future months to hold a meet and greet get-together, as well as to schedule an upcoming annual meeting to be able to elect new officers, amend bylaws, and really restart this coalition. And I'm going to invite Mike to make some comments as well.
I'm using your three minutes. I'd like to thank the Superintendent for sitting down with some of our representatives and listening to what the Coalition is attempting to do. And he has our full support, I'm sure the School Board does, to go ahead with the operation of re-establishing the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Family, otherwise known as MC3. Okay, and thank you for that.
On a personal note, my grandmother, Joanne Miller, was a retired librarian from Mount Clemens High School from the late, I would say, early 70s through to the mid 90s. And so I know that she would be so proud to know that Mount Clemens has a community coalition working to keep communities and youth safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here wearing several different hats. But the first one is I'd like to thank the Superintendent and the School Board and the staff in Mount Clemens for supporting the activities of the Mount Clemens Optimist Club. We have a Junior Optimist Club here at the high school and middle school. We're looking to establish next year a Joy Club at Seminole Academy. I was working with the interim principal over there, and he's waiting until you appoint a new principal over there that we can work with to re-establish the Junior Optimist Club over at Seminole. We've also had an essay contest, and the contest has concluded. We have three first-place winners, and we're looking to have a presentation at the high school on April 5th, probably about, I think, 1 o'clock. So you're welcome to attend that particular activity. The second thing I'd like to address to the Board is I'm also a member of the Cable Commission. And we have some concerns that it appears the school district no longer wants to participate in the Cable Commission. And the Cable Commission is the group that oversees the cable station operations in the city of Mount Clemens on behalf of the school district and on behalf of the city of Mount Clemens through an ordinance through the city of Mount Clemens. We also are the body that supervises the employees of the Cable Commission. Okay, they're our employees. And we look at a budget each year. And each year, we propose a budget, and then we present that budget. And I don't know if we've been good at doing this, presenting it to the School Board and the city of Mount Clemens. We also, as part of that agreement, the school district of Mount Clemens is our fiscal agent. And a fiscal agent is supposed to be able to take care of the funds that you receive, that we receive, from the city of Mount Clemens and from the school district, and disperse those funds for us. Recently, we've had a problem with our vendors not being reimbursed. And we'd like to just remind the School Board and the Superintendent that as our fiscal agent, that is your responsibility to do that for us so that we remain current and up to date with our bills and our payments. And I think that's it, okay? And again, I appreciate working with the Superintendent. Worked with him on the... He's going to have to remind me that... She TJ planning? Yep, yep. And that seems to be going well. And we're looking forward to having the School Board's input on that particular plan so that we can help move forward. Because, oh, my address, 875 North Estpana. And our Optimist Club and myself were very concerned and want to work with the school district and with the School Board to help maintain the school system here in Mount Clemens. And it was really great to see that the enrollment has gone up this year, first time in a long time. And hello to the people on the Board, looking at Dr. McFadden that I've known for years and served on the Board with him for several years. Thank you very much.
Are there any additional citizen comments? Nobody online? Last call for citizens' comments. Seeing there being none, we'll move the agenda. Informational items, item number five. Principal Quarterly Update. Item 5A, GSRP, Mrs. Stas. Item 5B, Seminole Academy, Mrs. Dickinson and Mr. Fringer. Item 5C, Secondary Complex, Mrs. McNeely. Superintendent?
Yep, good evening, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. As promised, we, tonight, our schools are going to do their quarterly update. As you know, one of our goals is to ensure that we're being transparent with everything and looking at data to drive our decisions that we make. So this will be their second time presenting. And we have all three of our building leaders, leadership, here tonight to present on some data, student achievement data, academic data, cultural data, as well as highlight some of the great things that are happening in their building. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Stas, and her show.
The students call me Miss Lou. It's much easier to use my first name just because the last name can get a lot of children in trouble. Just wanted to start, we have a slide presentation. We had it last time at the last meeting, but did not have all the materials, all the slides in there. So we have added all the slides and given you a current update on what's going on with the Great Start writing this program. We started back in October with 41 students enrolled. We are now at 62. We just had two students, two families, join us within the last two weeks. So even though school is getting closer to June, we still have families that are coming. So this is us supporting the homecoming parade, 101 Dalmatians. Some of the classroom pictures. They're putting puzzles together and doing an experiment over there on the side. This is our Halloween. All the children were dressing up, and we supported Seminole Academy. We did the parade through the hallways of the entire elementary building. So that was nice because in the past, we did a parade at King Academy where it was us in the ECSE classroom. So now we were able to bring all the students who've been to Seminole. We had Stan the Fireman came out, and the students really enjoyed that. We got to ride in the fire truck around the parking lot at Seminole. This is a pajama day at Seminole. This, I'm looking at it on an angle right now. Just in some more of the actual classrooms, you're seeing them doing this. This is a large group activity. This is when we had the reptarian company come in, and they brought all the reptiles to our students. That long yellow thing is actually a snake. And then we had some iguanas and some geckos. And it was really interesting to see the children. Nobody screamed and were scared of them. Once they realized that they were, you know, safe and okay to touch, they were really willing to explore and expand their horizons to check out all the different animals. So it is definitely an in-house field trip that I will do next year. It's the first time we've done it in the nine years I've been with Mount Clemens. So it was definitely a win-win for all. All dressed up for St. Patrick's. Some of the activities that they use. I think that was it. Any questions regarding GSRP? I just wanted to give you, let you all know, we do have a few members from our program here. Ms. Donaldson, Ms. Sidney, Ms. Ultra. They came to support the Board meeting this evening, and I appreciate that support. Some of the field trips that we have still planned for the rest of the school year, our budget allows it for this year. We're going to do a field trip to Mount Clemens Public Library. And we're inviting the families to come with them during the day. To, they have an hour presentation designed for the children, one to get them a membership at the library to encourage the families to support locally. We're also going to Premier Bowling, so the children will have an experience of bowling. And then our last field trip will be in June, and that is the Detroit Zoo. So we're all looking forward to broadening the horizons of our population at school. So, thank you.
I just want to, in addition to that presentation, I just want to acknowledge, you know, I know there was, when I first came in the door, there was a lot of questions and concerns about the transition of King and, you know, combining with Seminole, and how is that going to work? And I'm just proud of the staffs at both buildings that have come together, collaborated. You wouldn't know that there's any separation in that building. And this is our early, these are our future students, right? And all the research talks about the importance of that early childhood programming and impacts it has on the future, as a future predictor of student success. So they're over there doing a great job. As you can hear, the enrollment is increasing weekly, daily. And we're just very proud of that team over there. They work really hard. I don't get a chance to spend as much time with them as I do some of the other buildings for a number of reasons. But every time I walk through there, those kids are exploring, learning, you know, and that's what it's about at that age, and making learning fun. So shout out to that team, and keep up the good work. Up next, we have our, so some of you may know this, some may not. We have two interim co-principals at Seminole Academy, Mrs. Dickinson and Mr. Fringer. And I guess I'm a little biased, but I've heard this a lot from different staff members since they have taken over about the, just the culture and the environment in that building. I know that was a concern for us early on. And it has kind of been a 180 as far as the morale, the culture, and climate in that building. And I'm just very grateful for the two of them working night and day, weekends, taking my text messages at 9:00 at night, and so on. So I'll turn it over to them for their presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Ms. Dickinson said good evening. You better say good evening back.
Yeah, we're going to do that again. Ms. Dickinson, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Dickinson.
This is obviously our first quarterly report. So forgive us if we don't follow precedent that's been established. But we did put together a pretty fancy slide deck, and I think I can talk us through all of this. What we have is the last two years of enrollment trends here. And that was just captured through Power School. But it was an interesting visual for a few reasons. Kindergarten stands out, obviously, each year. We kind of have strong kindergarten numbers. And they have continued to increase with, I think it's the exception of 4th grade. We saw a little bit of a dip with 4th grade. But the rest of those numbers all have gone up a little bit over the last couple of years. I wanted to talk a little bit about our count day successes because this was successful in a few different ways. I wanted to tip my hat to Ms. Dawn and Ms. Michelle in the main office, and they're actually here tonight. At least they were, I saw them watching. When we talk about changing the culture in the school, those two people have a lot to do with it because they are the people that most people see when they come into the building. So I wanted to give them a shout out because our count day numbers, both times for both counts this year, were very, very successful. And we captured the funding for all of our students with the exception of half of a student at the first count. Sort of unprecedented, and I thought worthy of your attention. I also wanted to highlight that flyer because, and it was just a cold call to our friends over at Happy's Pizza in Mount Clemens, but one of our staff members secured 21 pizzas for us. 21 pizzas were offered for free, and we gifted those to the classes with the highest percentage of students present. So our count day was partially successful because of our collaboration with people from the community. And we've gotten to know the owner of Happy's pretty well because the kids also sent over some really nice thank you cards. So we're building relationships with Happy's.
This slide shows parent-teacher conferences a success. As you can see, and I got to move this because I need to see, I can't see. Fall 2023, our percentages of parents/ caregivers attendance in the fall was 51%. Most recently, for the winter, our percentages of parent/teacher/ caregivers attendance in the winter was 59%. So you can see that we did have an increase, which is great. While winter PT conferences are traditionally lower in participation rates in the fall, we attribute this to significant increase to the conceded, what? Outreach and promotion of most recent of our staff. Because what they did is, if they did not have parents to come in and sign in, they did Zoom, they did phone calls, and so they did a great job reaching out to our parents. And so we just look for an increase.
This is our data sets. These are the achievement numbers for reading and math. And we are looking at winter samples from last year and then winter samples from this year. You can see that reading achievement, the right bar graph, the right side of that screen, we see increases from last winter to this winter for every grade level. Our first graph on the left side, math has a couple of hiccups there, but three of those grade levels have shown increases from last winter scores compared with this winter scores. So I wanted to highlight that because I thought that was worth sharing. This is probably one of our most significant challenges. You know, the kids at elementary school don't typically have a lot of control over their attendance in school. They don't drive to school, nor do they find themselves on their way to school independently. But what this slide highlights, the state of Michigan considers a student chronically absent if they miss more than 10% of a school year. And so at this point, I think we're at 120 days, give or take. So if a student had missed more than 12 days of school, those kids would be defined as chronically absent. And so for the last two years, we're looking at 93 percentage, respectively, both years, of our student population at Seminole is considered chronically absent. I think we all agree that if kids aren't in school, then kids probably aren't learning. And so that is something that, we just dug through this data. We've been in these roles for seven weeks, I think, at this point. So that's something that, to me, was a significant red flag and worthy of our attention as we move forward.
And now we're looking at after-school tutoring. Session 2 ran for five weeks with the focus on reading fluency comprehension for upper elementary. Our lower elementary students focused on letters, sounds, and making words. And we serviced, what, 54 students?
And then Session 3 is just wrapping up this week. We have Monday and Wednesday group, and we have Tuesday and Thursday, Thursday group. That third session is ending this week, and then we're going to start the fourth session in a couple of weeks. But this particular session, we serviced 50 students. Those students are with us typically after school until 5:30, and then they're bussed home at 5:30. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. X. Ms. X has made herself available to ride that bus at the end of each day. It's a long day for Ms. X. So at 5:30, when the kids leave the school, she hops on the bus to make sure that there's parents waiting for all those kids because, well, up until a couple of weeks ago, it was dark at 5:30. So we just appreciate the extra effort that she's provided for us. Go ahead.
Our suspension rates are declining.
Yes.
Our suspension rates are declining.
This is my favorite slide. This is my favorite slide.
Because as you can see, for last year and the beginning of this year, you can see the significant increase of suspensions. But as you look at the burgundy bar, suspensions are way, way down. Because I think in the beginning, we had about 492, and we're less than 300 now.
All right, shout out.
Fantastic. Good job, everyone.
We're bringing the joy back to Seminole. This month in particular is a big month all across America. We call it March is Reading Month, and so does just about every other elementary school. And so part of what we've done this March, we participate in the One Book for One School grant. And so that means that every child in our school has received a copy of Roald Dahl's Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And so we did a little kickoff, and Mr. Roper never lies. We work day and night. So one evening, I thought to myself, we should have a little bit of fun with some golden tickets. So when we launched the book, we had grade level assemblies, and we had kids that were chosen, and they each got a bag with a candy bar inside of it. And a few of those kids had golden tickets. So those kids have been having pizza parties in the office with Ms. Dickinson and myself because they got the golden tickets. Well, these golden tickets became a hot commodity around Seminole. So my good friend, Ms. Murphy, who works in the office and has a background in the arts, decided that she was going to make a whole bunch of golden tickets for us. So what we've got right now is the staff members that are hiding golden tickets all over the school with their names written on the back of the golden ticket. And so when a student finds a golden ticket, and they are literally everywhere, we've had some on buses, we've had some tucked behind bulletin boards. When these kids find golden tickets, they get quite excited. Their responsibility is to find the teacher whose name is on the back. So we're building connections across grade levels. And then those teachers have taken money out of their pockets and went shopping. Some of them have received really nice gift bags from these teachers. And in this particular situation, this student and this teacher didn't really know each other before this encounter. So this was intentional on my part to help build bridges between people that might not know each other in the school because as the kids go through our program, they might have that teacher that gave them that prize that day. And then there's already an instant bond in place. So we've got golden tickets for a few more days. And we've also got Books for Bikes going on right now. That's something that we've historically done with the Masonic Lodge. We have three bicycles in our school. Entries are due tomorrow. We've already got quite a stack of them. But we're going to have a free bike for a 3rd grader, a free bike for a 4th grader, and a free bike for a 5th grader for the kids that have entered the contest. The contest requires book reports, and they have to have parent signatures saying that they've read the books. So the kids are going to find out Friday morning who the 3rd grade, 4th grade, and 5th grade winners are, respectively. So again, this is Ms. Michelle and Ms. Dawn. This is their handiwork. And when you walk into the office at Seminole, and I know plenty of you have walked into the office, it has a bit of a casino carnival kind of... It's just a really fun environment. And so they've dressed it up. We dressed it up for Valentine's. We dressed it up for Christmas. We dressed it up for St. Patrick's. And I just got a sneak preview right before today's meeting that the Tiger has got a pink hat with some ears on it coming soon. But it's just one of the ways that we help kind of create a fun culture in the building because when the little ones come to school, not only do we want them to get their minds expanded, but we also want to get their hearts expanded. Because if they enjoy being in our school, then they're going to invest a little bit more in the things that we're doing. So just wanted to highlight a few of the things that Dawn and Michelle have been doing because I think it's worth noting. These are two of our interventionists. The woman on the right, we refer to as Ms. Carol. And Ms. Carol helps kids with their ELA skills. The young man that she's with is clapping syllables. And then on the right, we have Ms. Friedman. Ms. Friedman is our math interventionist. Go ahead.
Cafeteria is cooking. I have the honor of being in the cafeteria from 11 to 1:30 every day.
And what an honor it is.
And it's awesome.
Have you ever been in an elementary cafeteria? It is an honor.
I think, I guess because I had experiences before I came to Mount Clemens and other districts. The reason for that particular picture on the left is because that's a collection of fruits and vegetables unlike anything I've ever seen in a school cafeteria for elementary kids. It looks like that every day. And when I first came to Mount Clemens, I was blown away by the quality of the food that served. It reminded me of home-cooked meals. And the women that cook the food for us tend to put enough love into it that we could call it a home-cooked meal. But that array of fruits and vegetables right there, I would bet you that most schools at the elementary level do not have that kind of diversity.
And we could give a shout out to Ms. Dawn.
Who else?
Ms. Lynn.
Ms. Lynn.
All of the people that work in the cafeteria, they do it with love. And they are also bringing a little extra energy. There's, sometimes there's some candy incentives. We've got kids that are celebrating birthdays, and somebody will run over and bring them a little treat. It, it has a family feel to it.
Our kids are reading. And reading. And reading crafting and planning with the Mount Clemens Public Library.
So that's the library staff. That was actually just a photo from yesterday. Mr. Lavender, myself, Ms. X, all the folks from the library, were working on building a few more bridges specifically with our summer school program. And then beyond, trying to figure out ways that we can increase access to literature. And what we found out yesterday is that we're going to get access to some digital library cards. So kids might not have to trek themselves to the library, but they'll have access online. So that, those were our conversations just from yesterday. Go ahead.
And we had a wonderful time at our Black History Celebration. And if you were not there, stay tuned for next year, because you missed a treat.
Yep.
Add to it.
Well, we've already moved on to the final slide. And we wanted, we wanted to make sure that we put a picture of ourselves in the slideshow. And, and with respect, with respect. Mr. Roper, we appreciate the honor, and we appreciate the confidence and trust that you've given us. We are working hard. We're probably both working harder than we've ever worked, because we kind of stepped into something that we, you know, we didn't know what we were doing until we got ourselves into it.
Absolutely.
It's an awesome responsibility, but it's a responsibility that we take very seriously, because the kids that we serve in this community deserve the same kind of education that all of us had when we were young, and that's what we're striving for. But we did want to end with a little bit of humor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just a couple of things.
Ms. Robert, can I add one thing regarding the GSRP?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for this. Totally slipped my mind. Script Tower, Channel 7, and Scholastic Books allowed Seminole and GSRP and ECSE to have a book fair the other month. Every child in our program and staff were able to get five free books. We have been selected for a second book fair that will be going on in April.
Wonderful.
Where the students and staff will all, again, receive free books. So I just wanted to share, that, that is tremendous, because our, we, our families, our students don't pay a penny, but they're able to start their own library at their house. Compliments of Script Tower, Channel 7, and Scholastic Books.
That's wonderful.
One to let you go.
Just a few things about that dynamic duel over there, as you can see their presentation. I, I will say this, in my years in education, there was some concern, I know, lifted for me, and, and Mr. Finger and Ms. Dickinson don't know this, you know, from, from different people about, you know, two people co-leading this and that, are you sure? And, and I was hands down sure, right, because of the people they are and why they do what they do. You haven't seen a team like that and a balance like that. I haven't seen in a long time. The humility that they lead with, the humbleness, is why that place is, is, is doing what it's doing. And the teachers that work in there, and, and including the two of them, probably don't sometimes feel like it's humming because of just the state of what education is now, but it is. And it's, 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 it is in a good place, and it's moving forward. And so I don't, you know, I don't want to just breeze over that. When you find two people leading, usually there's some stuff going on, somebody, somebody really, it's none of that. And so I, I just want to acknowledge the two of them for the great job they're doing again, and, and going over and beyond. There is no, there isn't an off time, right? When you're in leadership, you're never off. I mean, it's unfortunate, we got to bring, I, I have to make them take mental health days and encourage them to take care of themselves first, because what we do, as you all may or may not know, is the most stressful thing that there is. And, and the day, the times now in our kids' needs are like no other. And, and the two of them, I have to tell them, you know, again, night and day, weekends, you just can't make it up. And it is what it takes, and it's what it's going to take for us to move this district in the direction we're going in. It can't be a punch in, a punch out. It has to be over and beyond, and, and they do that with love and passion, so. And, and that team over there, so I appreciate the two of them. A couple of things I want to acknowledge in their presentation that are important. The chronic absenteeism. I just wanted people to be aware of that. That, that is huge. For any growth that we, they've shown there with a, a number of students chronically absent is impressive. And it's nothing that's unique to us, right? Anywhere in public education, if we are looking at like demographic environments and communities, this is an issue across the United States with chronic absenteeism. So for those staff and the teachers, interventionists, the office, kitchen, custodians, to have any growth academically with that many, that high percentage of your students chronically absent is amazing. And just imagine what it could be if, if they were there every day. Especially after, post-COVID. I mean, it, in our day, you had a runny nose, you still went to school, right? Don't call me to come home. Now, it's, it's, we have, we're probably going to have to change the bar in education, because now, any sign of anything, stay home. And so chronic absenteeism is not going down anytime soon due to that and several other reasons. But again, to have any growth for those students with that amount of students chronically absent is impressive. So shout out to that whole staff. I want to talk about the environment and the climate that's being created over there from the staff. And it starts, as they said earlier, with what Ms. Dawn and Ms. Michelle have done in that office. When you walk in that office, it's funny, a quick story. When I first went over there the first time that they have created that environment in the office, I, I walked in and I said to Ms. Dawn, now this is what an office is supposed to feel like. And she didn't really know me too well at that time, and I think she, she thought like, no big deal. She didn't know that I meant like, no, now this is what an office is supposed to look like in an elementary school. This is what makes kids want to come to school. This is warm, it's inviting, it's fun. And so that's just a small example, but it has a huge impact of creating a climate and a culture that, that kids want to come. You know, somewhere when you get to middle school, that starts to shift. For all my secondary people, you, you know, it gets a little harder to encourage and be, you know, have, to encourage kids to come to school. But secondary is doing creative things too. But I just, I just know that seems small, but the impact is huge, and I don't want to just skim over that. During tutoring, one thing they didn't acknowledge, our students are fed before they start tutoring. They're bussed home. That's huge for our kids. Sometimes, as you all know, a lot of our kids, that's their only meal, right? That might be dinner, even though the bus company gets mad because some food is left on the bus sometimes. But our kids are eating. The decrease in suspensions, that comes with a price. And everybody that works at Seminole in, in education knows that's not easy, right? We're trying to, the narrative before, that I've heard in the data show before I got here, was that when kids made mistakes and made some bad choices, we got rid of them. Well, we can't be shocked at the student achievement data if they're not here, as Mr. Finger, I believe, said earlier. So the fact that they're doing what they're doing and addressing the social emotional needs of our kids and keeping them in school is taxing. It's much easier for our educators in that building to send those kids home and say, okay, goodbye. But we know that what they're not getting when they're not with us. And so for that, that narrative and that staff with their leadership, teachers that are trying to figure it out and keep kids and help kids learn from their choices or the lack of skills that they have is impeccable. And it is the mindset and the culture that it's going to take to shift this district into, I, I don't like to say what it once was, what it's going to be and the great things to come. Black History Month, I just want to acknowledge how great that is. Who led that?
The Equity.
Terry Gary.
The Equity Team, Terry Gary. I sat in on a couple of their meetings on the Equity Team. And I know she was like spearheading that, but everybody chipped in. And so I want to give her a shout out and, and just appreciate that team. And that, that event was so great that I was out of town, and so I couldn't make it unfortunately. But I even got a text from our mayor from that event, who attended that event and was very pleased, and told me what a great job that school had did. So shout out to that team over there. And, and that's it for Seminole. All right, up next, secondary. I always say high school, I'm working on that. Secondary, complex, middle and high school. And I'll turn it over to our high school principal, Ms. McNeely.
All right, good evening, everyone. So this first slide here, this is our current enrollment for middle school. So on the far left is fall of last year, and then winter of last year, and then fall of this year in yellow, and current at winter in green. So as you can see, we have, we are trending and a positive slope there at middle school. And then this slide, same thing, colors mean the same thing. This is our enrollment in the high school. So we are seeing mostly a positive trend. There is a little bit of lag at ninth and 10th grade, but our 11th and 12th grade are trending up. And then this is total enrollment for secondary. And I, I will say that our enrollment is 370 students. And last year, this time, it was 340. So we're up 30, which is fantastic. These next slides are data on a student achievement. This is our NWA data. This is middle school. And on the left is our reading scores. And down below, you'll see in the red, those are the norms for both reading and math. Reading is up really well for seventh grade, doing a fabulous job. Sixth grade is struggling a bit. And then in math, math is up in seventh and eighth grade. Really nice green bars there. So they're working hard. We still have a lot of work to do. This is percent proficient is what those numbers are. So we aim for, we really want to have 80%, that's the golden bar, so we're working on it. And then the next slide is high school. Same thing, reading on the left and math on the right. And 11th and 12th grade, reading is increasing. Again, these are percentage proficient. And the number of proficient students in math is also increasing. And I think that's our, our, our best right there, if we're doing this. So keep working on that as well. Attendance, again, is a struggle here as it is in, at Seminole. And currently in middle school, it is, so this is the number of students that are chronically absent. So it has gone down from last year. So that's the first two bars. It's quarter one of last year and then quarter one compared to this year. And then the next two are quarter two of last year compared to quarter two of this year. So it's a, a, a decrease in the number that are chronically absent, which is, any number in that is positive. And then we have high school, same thing, a slight decrease from last year. We are trying to implement some fun things for our kids to kind of get them here. Right now, we're working on a March Madness, thanks to our, our coordinator, Ms. Disico. And so they are in brackets, we have middle school and we have high school, and they are competing in their advisories. So each week, if they, if they, the highest percentage of students in their class, then, you know, they stay in the bracket. And then eventually, the grand prize is the hub breakfast cooked for them in April. So. Discipline, our suspensions are also down. We're working really hard at intervening with our students and having restorative meetings and finding what our students need to help them to be successful in the classroom, to build positive relationships with each other, and also with adults that are in the building. So there is a definite decrease in the number of suspensions for the second quarter. And that side, that was middle school, sorry. And then this is the high school slide as well, and it's down as, as well. Those are some of the things we're doing for discipline, MTSS, being visible, and using restorative practices. And our next slide, so the next section is our celebrations that we're having here at school. And we are trying to celebrate our academics in school, focusing on that. So this is our celebration for the honor roll. And we had four, for our first semester, four of our middle school students had 4.0s. 20 had 3.5 GPA for the first, first semester, and 11 had a 3.0. So that's a picture of some of them. We had a ceremony, they got Mount Clemens hats, and they got some certificates for free tacos. And they also got bather bucks, which I'll, I'll show you later what they get to use their bather bucks on. And then we have our high school, which is even more exciting. And I'm sorry, that didn't transfer very well, the, the slide. It looked prettier on my computer. But, so we did have 19 of our high school students in the first semester had 4.0s, which is amazing. So proud of them. 32 of them had 3.5s, which is fantastic as well. And then on the next slide, we had 35 students with 3.0s. So it is a huge celebration. We also had a ceremony with them, and they had the same kind of swag bag thing. We also had the opportunity to celebrate our two CTE Students of the Year for HVAC, Jordan Bellmore and Trayvon Jack. There was a ceremony at the ISD to celebrate them and all the other CTE students. And we also had a spelling bee, hadn't had a spelling bee here in a while. So we had our first spelling bee. There were 12 students here who competed. And Quinn LaBelle won the spelling bee here. She went on to the original spelling bee at the ISD, and she made it to the second round. So we're really proud of her. We also had some fantastic scholars in the high school with writing essay contests, the Optimist Club winners. And they were writing about how to change the world with optimism. Cheyenne Jefferson won first place. Sheriah Johnson had second place, and third place was Lamia Johnson Baker. And also, there was a essay contest from the Macomb County Ministerial Alliance for the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Essay Contest. And they were writing, "Now Is the Time." Quincy Harris won first place, Kamaya Farrell, second place, Latoya Johnson Baker, third place, and honorable mention, Destiny Horton. So, excuse me, they're all seniors, so we're really proud of them as well. This is our bather buck store, so I referenced that. We use that for PBIS to positively influence our students. The store is run by the Student Council, so they, on their lunch hours, go in and work the store. They sell the items, so no money is exchanged, it's just bather bucks. They also do the shopping, they make recommendations on what we should put in the store. So students earn the bather bucks with positive behavior, attendance, good citizenship, doing the right thing, those kinds of things. Some of them save them up until they have a nice stash, and then they go into the store. We're also going to be using this as an attendance incentive next, next month as well. Some other celebrations, we have our science club. This meets after school. This is run by the Metro Park staff. It's a hands-on exploration of nature and with the Lake St. Clair Metro Park staff. And this is a picture of some students creating a beaver dam. And then the others, esports, and I know we mentioned them before, but they did get a Donors Choose grant that was fully funded for $2,600. So to buy supplies, gaming supplies for their, their club, or their sport, sorry, it's not a club. This is some students that were at the Diversity Summit. Ms. Terry and Mr. Hannah took a group of our students that was held at the MISD. And they got to listen to various breakout sessions, some of them about why people leave their countries, stories of resiliency from youth overcoming adversity, and creating social change by engaging with your local government. So we're really proud of them. And there's a picture of Wyatt, who did a bang-up job. I'm heard, like, fantastic, yeah, so. And here is a picture of a field trip to Wayne State University. That was held just a couple of days ago. There, the students got to do a walking tour of the campus. They did attend a workshop on admissions and a student Q and A session, as well as enjoyed lunch on campus. And then this is a cleanup effort by our SAD group, or Students Against Destructive Decisions. So they're helping to make sure that our campus looks nice inside and out. And a little shout out to basketball. I know they get a lot of attention for the sport, so I wanted to point out some academic we have on the right there. It's the All Academic Team. So Leah Williams, Bishop Tom- So Leah Williams, Bishop Thomas, Marquise Cribs, Robert Jackson, Ronald Carson, DeAnthony Pickett and Charlie Rucker were on the All Academic Team, so we're very, very proud of them. And then on the left side, sorry, I'm still have trouble with left and right. You've got the league awards for Bishop Thomas, Don Writing and Marquise Cribs and also for Lila Sears. And then lastly, there was a staff versus students basketball game. And this was put on by the Student Council. It was a fundraiser and they'll be using that money and circling back into the school community. Thank you.
Again, we appreciate all the, all of the staff members at the secondary campus. People are working really hard to encourage our students to come to school every day, to come here and ready to learn. And some of the efforts that you see, again, just like at Seminole, those things, we, you know, it may seem small or little to some people, but the things that are happening take a lot of work, a lot of collaboration and a lot of commitment by people. Nothing happens in, in our buildings without the adults. And that's why it's important for us to invest in, in quality people that care about kids and want to do the right thing for kids. Overall, just to give our, our public a little something while you're still here, you've heard that enrollment is up at both buildings. When I got here initially, we were, we were planning to, for this year for six hundred and fifty students and we are approximately at eight hundred and ten students. The second count window, we increased another thirty students. So this year, so far, we're, we are at about sixty students, I believe, up for the, for the year. So if you know anything about our data, we've talked about it time and time again, if you tuned in to these meetings, that's not a, that's not a trend. And while we're excited about the growth and, and things that are happening, we still have a long way to go. But it does feel good to, to be going in the right direction and, and off to a good start. I would like to take credit for all of those things, but it's not, it's the people here. Everybody has jumped on board. When I started, it's been, you know, it's changed, it's uncomfortable. Most of the people here have allowed me to make them uncomfortable. And I think our, you know, you have to have data to support the things we do and people are buying in when you can show them the why behind what you do. It's not Mr. Roper's great ideal, it's the data that does the talking and we use that to inform our decisions. And it's not personal, it's in the best interest of this community and this organization. And tough decisions come along with that as well. But at the end of the day, we have to do what we have to do to make sure we're here and make sure we're providing the valuable option for our kids. So thank you to everyone that presented. The fact, and one piece in this data that they presented on is how we are, if you look at the historical data, how our twelfth graders are staying, that wasn't always the case here. We would get students and then by twelfth grade, we would lose them. So seeing this biograph flipped is impressive and telling of, of what's happening. So one of the goals was to, when I first got here, it was just to, if we could just maintain the kids we have, let alone increase enrollment, would, would have been a win. But we're doing that and beyond and we have a long way to go, things aren't perfect. But we are, we're working, we have open and growth mindsets and we're taking on the challenge to, to give our kids what they deserve. Last but not least, I want to, before we get to the, the rest of the business, I want to introduce two of our new staffs as they can come up. Mrs. Lowe and Mrs. Hines, come on up. Mrs. Lowe is on our pink, in our pink here on the left. Mrs. Hines is, is on the right. They just started within the last two or three weeks. I'm, I'm gonna get this right, I've been mixing this up, watch this. Mrs. Lowe is the career, college and career success coach. And Mrs. Hines is our staff and student recruiter. They hail to us from all over the place with a lot of experience. Ms. Hines, last stop, we stole her from Chippewa Valley. Yeah, that's right. Mrs. Miles has been in River Rouge, Detroit Public Schools, the YMCA, they have. Mrs. Lowe. Former name, yeah. Their experience that they bring to us is an instant increase in opportunities for our kids. Their experience, their connections, their networks. So we're very excited to have the two of them join our team and, and make us stronger as we move forward. And you'll be seeing them around, so just wanted to introduce them.
Thank you.
I'm working upward.
Moving forward. We'll move to agenda item number six, the consent agenda. Item six A, approval of minutes. Item six A one, March thirteen, twenty twenty-four, committee of the whole workshop. Item six A two, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, special meeting. Item six A three, February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Item six B, approval of bills for payment. Six B one, February bills for payment. So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Walker. Dee Walker. And seconded by member Walker. Any question or comments about the motion on the floor? Which is seconded by Jay Walker. Any question or comments about the motion on the floor? Seeing there being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carry. Action item number, item seven, business committee. Item seven A, Wi-Fi controller renewal and Wi-Fi upgrade. Item seven B, bond engagement letters. Item seven C, secondary complex roof. Item seven D, the sale of king, which is closed session. I will move from item seven D to be, I move to table, item seven D.
Support.
Yeah, I'm gonna need a second for that.
Support.
Move by myself, seconded by Mr. Dee Walker.
Table till one.
Uh, next meeting. Table to the next meeting. Any questions?
Workshop or, or regular meeting, right?
You know what, I'm gonna table it back to committee. Yeah, I'm gonna table it back to committee. I'll go back.
For what?
For discussion. That, we're gonna move that closed session, sale of king. I'm gonna table it to go back to the business committee.
To the business committee?
Yes. Any additional question or comments? I'll repeat my motion, I moved the table to go back to committee. And I believe Dante supports that.
Yes.
No additional question or comments?
Why are you tabling it back to the business committee?
For discussion, everybody's not here to discuss it. And I have some questions and we can't discuss it in closed session because we have to have a super majority. There's only four of us here, it has to be five to go in the closed session.
Right, so how come we're not gonna do it in a regular workshop? In a closed session and in a workshop? I'm just asking questions. Why aren't we doing it with all of us and rather than just the business committee?
In a workshop, I'm gonna ask this question off the top of my head. We can't go in a closed session in a workshop because it's not slated as a, as a regular meeting, it's a workshop.
Okay, so why not table it to the next regular meeting?
Because I might just, I might ask the question in the, in the business committee first and then bring it to a regular meeting. If I table it to the next regular meeting, then at the next business meeting, discussions won't be had because it's going to the next regular meeting. You understand what I'm saying?
But those that aren't in the business committee will have, still have questions.
Exactly, and then we'll go in a closed session after.
I got you.
Have those questions.
Alright.
Great questions, great questions. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon.
So your, your motion is just on the item D, correct?
Correct, item seven D.
Okay, yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carry. Item seven A, oh, these are motion items, these are action items. So we're gonna need a motion to approve item seven A, Wi-Fi controller renewal and Wi-Fi upgrade.
I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant superintendent of finance, Mrs. Dawes. As for the public and people viewing or here, these are all items that we have discussed in workshop. And so the, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the process. This isn't something that you all are acting on and voting on blindly or without input. And so these have been to our subcommittees and the information has been shared at our workshop. So today is the, is the, is how we do this. You, it, we bring it to the board meeting for official action. So just wanted to share that for people watching, understand that process. Mrs. Dawes?
We're ass, um, asking for approval of network switches at Seminole and Wi-Fi access, the upgrade and renewal of the Wi-Fi controller. The upgrade is eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars, but the district's obligation is twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. And it's a three-year maintenance subscription. The Wi-Fi controller renewal is six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and it's for a three-year period, which we will get reimbursed that amount back through E-rate. So it's recommended that the board approve this and the total committed amount upfront would be nineteen thousand, one hundred, eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Ms. Dawes, can you explain why, why this is happening? It's stated in there, but I just want, I want it to be on record.
While she's looking for the actual language, is, is upgrades our infrastructure and our?
Yeah, it says this aims to enhance the high school networking backbone switching, providing improved internet and network throughout, throughout and speed to accommodate the evolving needs of technology. Additionally, the project involves upgrading Wi-Fi access for the Seminole building to enhance network access for Chromebooks and other devices. So, I mean, there's a reason behind it, like as we know, more, the more software that come out, the more it needs, yeah, like it really, it takes a lot to process those things. And so every like five years, ten years, we need to increase our internet speed and, and our software and hardware behind that. So I just want to make sure everybody understood why.
I move to approve item seven A.
A second.
Any additional question or comments? Call the roll, please.
We'll start with Mrs. Kahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Item seven B, bond engagement letters, Mrs. Superintendent.
Mrs. Dawes. You know I can always talk while you're pulling that out. So we talked about this in several board meetings and workshops leading up to today as it's no surprise or secret to anyone that we, we want to secure our buildings and, and create that same infrastructure and the facilities and other needs that we have. And so we are going to be going out for a bond in May of twenty twenty-five, is that our right date? May of twenty twenty-five? And so some of the pre-preliminary work that you've had, presented to you in the past from our partners at Plant Moran, Real Point and as well as Partners in Architecture, this is to secure them to do some of the preliminary work to get us started in that direction. So we can be within that twelve-month window to get things accomplished in, in a timely manner to be compliant with the, the bond process. If you need, you need more information than that? You wanna maybe the, the amounts or something?
Yeah, if you could just say what the amounts are gonna be.
The Partners in Architect has a fee of fifteen thousand dollars for the pre-bond planning and bond application. And then once the bond passes, there's a new construction is a six-point-five percent estimated construction cost. And there is a seven-point-five estimated construction cost for any renovation or addition. Plant Moran has a fee of thirty-five thousand. And the, they will act as the owner representative. And once the bond is complete and we know the full scope of the project, they will set a fixed rate that is some, is between two-point-two-five percent and three-point-two-five percent.
And that's percentage of the bond, the actual bond, correct?
The project, yes, yep.
And I, I believe for Partners in Architecture, Partners in Architecture as well, I know for sure with Plant Moran, Real Point, in the event that the bond doesn't pass the first time, they will still be there and be on retainer to help us go after a second time too.
With no additional money?
Same.
Correct.
Correct.
Any additional questions?
And so Mount Clemens is, is, we're, we're being asked to approve the fifteen thousand and the thirty-five thousand so that we can go out for bond to basically repair, make the repairs to the high school mainly?
It, it'll be coming into the whole district, it'll be, it'll impact the whole district, but.
But the bond is for repairs?
Repairs, yep.
In this, in this district?
And upgrade repairs for our district.
Okay.
This is an action item. Action item number, item seven B, bond engagement letters. Waiting for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Jay Walker, support by member Dee Walker. Any additional question or comments? Seeing there being none, call the roll.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry. Item seven C, secondary complex roof. Should I just go right into Ms. Dawes?
Yeah, you can go ahead and go.
Looking for the board to make a motion to approve the roof inspection proposal presented. And this will be out of the secondary complex. There was an award that was given in twenty twenty-one, but there was a hold put on it. And the damage to the roof needs to be inspected and it will let us know what we need to do to move forward on setting up something to get it fixed.
Okay, okay, you repeat that. So basically, we got a grant that we need to approve, something for the complex or secondary roof?
So.
There's not a grant.
Not a grant, you said award, I knew that was gonna make me throw it up. So it was a, a contract was basically awarded. There were in twenty twenty-one, there was a, a deal agreed upon with Blooms Roofing Company
Yes.
to do some roof work at the secondary complex. That got put on hold for whatever reasons, we weren't here, so we're not really quite sure. Meanwhile, the roof has continued. Meanwhile, the roof has continued to deteriorate and, uh, rain is, is gonna probably impact that building to the point of no return if we don't do something quickly. So we've, actually, we're contacted from the roofing company, um, because they haven't heard back, um, from the district since that time, uh, when the project was put on hold. Um, we've met with the owner of the company to, uh, negotiate and figure out what we can do. And this is the first steps, um, of moving forward to looking at replacing, fixing, making sure that roof is, is stable and to stabilize that building. Um, one of the things that we're hopeful for in conversations with the, um, owner of the roofing company is that, uh, he is going to, he's looking, after this assess- assessment, um, they're gonna work to try to, um, to use the same contract that we went into agreement with in twenty twenty-one. So if we can get the same rate from before COVID, um, now, that'd be very impressive. And he understands our situation and is willing to try to work with us. So this assess, this fee is for the assess, the new assessment to figure out what further has been done.
How much is the fee?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Not to exceed that.
Okay. So we move to approve the fee for the secondary complex roof because of over five thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's an action item, action item seven C, secondary roof complex, move to approve the fee for twenty thousand dollars.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Dee Walker.
Support.
Support by Ms. Jay Walker. Is any additional question or comments?
What was the approved amount for the original, uh, roof repair?
Total?
For, yeah, that Bloom, that Bloom was gonna do it for.
Was it two-point-four, two-point-three million?
I think it was two-point-three billion.
Two-point-three million? And so now we're having to pay an additional twenty thousand because that didn't get done, correct? Because, but, because it has to be assessed again because it's different from what it was in twenty twenty-one.
Three years ago.
Yeah. So we're, we're being, we're having to pay more money because of an error that was done two years ago, right? Okay.
I don't know if an error was done, but something wasn't done.
Well, they were approved and then they stopped doing, they stopped, they stopped it from happening. So regardless, it should have been done back, back in the day. So we're having to pay twenty thousand dollars more over and above that two-point-three million to get this looked at. Okay. We can't have that anymore.
Any other additional question or comments? Seeing there being none, call to roll.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry. Action item eight curriculum, eight A resolution, uh, resolution authorizing Mount Clemens Community Schools' participation in School of Choice twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Yeah, item eight A one, April two to September six, zero, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, you know. Item eight A one A, one oh five and one oh five C. Mrs. Superintendent?
I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant superintendent of curriculum, uh, Mr. Lavender and newly, um, defying board secretary, Mr. Lavender.
Uh, this evening, Mount Clemens Administration recommends that the Board of Education approves a resolution authorizing Mount Clemens Community Schools to participate in Schools of Choice enrollment for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. We would like to open the School of Choice enrollment period, April second, twenty twenty-four, and have it close September sixth, twenty twenty-four. And this is in regards to sections one oh five and one oh five C. Section one oh five permits local school districts to enroll students who reside in other local school districts within the same intermediate school district. Section one oh five C allows enrollment of students who reside in school districts located in contiguous intermediate school districts.
This is an action item, requires a motion. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by a member Jay Walker, support a member Dee Walker. Is any additional question or comments about the motion on the floor? Seeing there being none, call to roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry. Information items, items, no, item nine, Finance Committee. Item nine A, financial reports. Item nine B, contract listing. Is there anything from the Finance Committee?
No, I, I mean, I think we went over everything and, and we were all fine with this stuff out.
Any additional question or comments for the Finance Committee? Moving, uh, agenda right along. Information items, item ten, Superintendent's comments, item ten A, board member recognition. Item ten B, Board of Education retreat information. Mr. Superintendent?
I, I know what you want to say, is keep it to three minutes. I heard you.
Mr. Superintendent, state your name and address and please, keep it to three minutes. And address only the chair of the board.
One-five-five Cass Avenue is my address I live here. Um, just to, I mean, you've heard a lot of the updates and celebrations and acknowledgements, uh, from our schools. So I don't have much more to add. A few things I do want to share, um, through our partnership with, uh, AAA. We're excited to, um, let the public and the community know that, um, we were, we were awarded a grant for fourteen thousand dollars to provide, um, free drivers' training, um, for segment one, two, and road tests for up to twenty-five, um, students at the high school. We think we're gonna, we're gonna work to establish the criteria of who, um, for our, we're thinking our seniors who are getting ready to be adults out here in the world and need license. So we're really, um, excited about that and, and shout out to everybody that worked out, worked on securing that grant uh, through our partnership with AAA, our grant writer Cindy, uh, Boddecker worked alongside, uh, with them to secure those funds as well as everybody else in the office getting them information. So another opportunity for our kids to have access, um, to the resources and, 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 uh, we're excited for them. So, uh, still more to come on that and, um, look forward to that. They talked about it already at Seminole, I don't know if they mentioned it, but the entire fourth and fifth grade is participating in, um, a free field trips to the Metro Parks for lessons and, um, on the solar eclipse. It'll include all fees, transportation and everything is, is, is awarded, paid for. Uh, our high school students are having that experience as well. Um, again, I want to just thank the mayor for coming out and supporting us and participating, um, at our Black History Event at, at Seminole, um, at our high school. Um, shout out to our, I want to give a shout out to our athletic coordinator, um, Coach Garland. He facilitated and hosted, uh, we hosted, I don't know if, if we've done it in the past, I'm sure at some point in time, but, um, the girls' district basketball tournament. And it went off without a hitch, we had a, a team back out. But besides that, he did a great job of, uh, making sure that that event was done. And, and thank you to all of the volunteers and people who stepped up to help and work, um, for that, that event. Strategic planning team, as was mentioned early, earlier, we, we've talked about, we had our strategic planning meeting with over fifty, uh, community members, um, and, um, participating from alumni to current students. And it was a beautiful sight to see, we have pictures to come. And, I mean, it was just awesome, uh, environment, collaborative environment of community members stakeholders who care about this district, who want to see great things happen. And, um, their voices were all heard. Our planning team is gonna get together to, um, conduct the next steps in that process. And, and our goal is by June to have the finished product to the community. Um, I want to. We the testing, we the testing is complete, we the, we the testing is for our, um, I gotta get the acronym right. Our ELL, English Language Learner. Students, um, and it is a very, very comprehensive assessment that has to be done, um, every year. And so we are grateful for, uh, Ms. Pankatay for facilitating those assessments and making them happen. So that's finished and that's always a, it's a big thing and that we can get us in a, a, a lot of, uh, um, trouble if we're not compliant with meeting those guidelines and timelines. So thank you, uh, Mrs. Pankatay. M-step, our state assessment, PSAT and SAT will begin after our break next week. We are on spring break, just a reminder, um, we are on spring break next week. We wish our students and staff, you know, the best through that testing cycle. And this is the, this is the grind time for staff and students, it's just a lot of testing from here on out. It's NWEA, it's M-step, it's PSAT, it's one thing after another. So, uh, we encourage the community to make sure our babies are getting, uh, rest, fed, and ready to, uh, per- perform when they get here on those days. Congratulations to, um, one of our middle school students, Seth Bern Doc. Seth is a middle school battling bather. Uh, he is the leading scorer for our middle school team. Seth has been invited to play in the middle school All-Star Game. His hard work on, on and off the court as a student athlete has led him to it, to this reward. Uh, we are very proud of Seth and hats off to, uh, Coach Mackay Johnson. And, uh, last but not least, we want to acknowledge, with distinguished honor, we get a chance to acknowledge, I'm gonna read this too. Get to acknowledge, uh, our board member, Mr. Dante Walker. Um, and I'll just read the, the memo we got, we received from M.A.S.B. Dear Superintendent Roper, the Michigan Association of School Boards is pleased to acknowledge the accomplishment of at least one of your school board members and your district's whole board for their achievements in twenty twenty-three. I have enclosed a list of, uh, I, I have enclosed a list of your district award recipients. We are very proud of board members who use their valuable time to improve their leadership effectiveness by completing individual board development courses. We know you will want to celebrate this accomplishment by attending the County Area School Board Association Meeting that is designated for this purpose. If your CASBA, whatever acronym that means, is active, please watch for an announcement about the award ceremony. I wanna get to this part. With that being said, um, the, the M.S., M.A.S.B. will be listing all award recipients on the website on March first. Sample press releases can be found, congratulations to your district. So, um, I don't see the part I'm looking for. But the board member that they wanted to, um, acknowledge was our board member, Mr. Dante Walker. And that's all I have for tonight.
Wow. That's three minutes. Good job, Superintendent. All right, board comments, before we get to board comments, CSBA means County School Board Association.
Okay.
And M.A.S.B. means, uh, Michigan Association of School Boards. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Dante. So we're going out, you talking about the retreat information.
I'm sorry?
Retreat.
It was on there? I, I missed that?
Yep.
Oh, great. Our retreat, we're having a, a board retreat is going to be May, what do we decide? May tenth and eleventh, uh, we are going to, uh, gonna have a retreat and dig a little deeper, have some professional development as a, as a unit, board, central office staff. And, uh, we're looking forward to that day and a half of, um, professional development. We have a, uh, a very, I, I would say, a wor- world-renowned, uh, facilitator. Um, Dr. Baraj is gonna fly in from Minnesota to, um, to help us grow. So we're looking forward to that. And I want to thank all my board members for making that such an easy task to get seven people together.
Like herding cats.
On, on, uh, on, uh, the same date. Um, but I do thank you and appreciate all of you for your flexibility, flexibility and, um, willingness to participate so we can grow together.
Awesome. You done?
I'm done.
That's last, Mrs. Superintendent. All right, uh, our board comments, item eleven. I'm gonna move over to, uh, Ms. Kahoon.
Well, thank you, Dr. McFadden. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to the amazing gifts that, uh, that I received. I wasn't here last time. Um, it was a really bad day for me and receiving those items really kind of changed the tra- trajectory. It really warmed my heart, so I want to say thank you for those. Um, having the reptiles at the GSRP is so amazing. I'm so happy with all the things that they're doing with the GSRP. The, having the kids interact with those reptiles are so important for tactical sensory input. It's amazing. So I love seeing all the creative things that GSRP is doing. Uh, but most of all, I like the parent engagement and encouraging the parental engagement. Uh, um, it is, to me, that is one of the single most things that we need to, uh, continue to do as a district is encourage parental engagement. It's so vitally important to the success of the child. Um, we always have to go back to that parent-child relationship and encourage and nurture that. So, um, Seminole, um, building the relationships, um, within that school, what a great idea by what they're doing. Um, that extra effort, um, for those two that have never been in that position before, um, they're thriving. They're really thriving. Um, um, and then, um, so on the, um, the absenteeism, I would love to see some brainstorming and how that can, like, how we can change that. What are other districts doing? I know they're having same issues, but, you know, try to come up with some brainstorming ideas for that. So, um, this, the, the tutoring was great, the suspension decrease was outstanding. Um, we should be showing, you know me, every time I give a board comment, like, we need to be showcasing all these things. Um, so with that said, I want copies of the graphs. I want copies to be given to, at least to me, I don't know, I'm not gonna speak on other board members, but I'd like to see that, you know, on our website, I'd like to see it on our social media. I'd like to get a copy of that so that I can have that for future reference. I love the bridges that are being built and how creative the faculty in all of the schools are being. They're being, they're, they're, they're coming up with great ideas to interact with the kids. Um, so kudos to, uh, Ms. Dickinson and Mr. Fringer, uh, for an amazing job that they're doing. And yes, I'm gonna be speaking a lot because I didn't get my chance last time, so. Um, and then, um, the, um, on the suspensions and the absenteeism, is there a way to get the number of kids that we have in each of the schools and do like a verse, like, the amount of kids that we have versus the amount that were suspended? So we can see the correlation between the amount of kids we have in the school and the amount of suspensions that we've had. Okay? I think that's, that's a, uh, um, a factor that's, that would be good to monitor, okay? Um, because you can say how many kids, but how many kids are in the school, right? How many are in each of those schools? Um, GPAs, I love seeing that. Again, that would be good to know, how many kids we have versus how many are getting the four-point-os and the three-point-fives and things like that. So are you, are you confused by that?
No.
Okay. So, um, you know, just, um, just the amount of things that you have going on in this district and the faculty that's willing to continue to work with you, continue, continue to trust you and you building the relationships with them, the students being, being able to build the relationships with the teachers and the faculty. I mean, that's how you get a well-oiled machine to work well. So kudos to you, kudos to the faculty, and kudos to the students for wanting to make sure that this district continues to thrive. So, um, just a couple suggestions, um, bather bucks, is there, like, great job on that. Is there a way that we can interact with local businesses, um, to possibly get things from them to give to the kids? Like, is there a way to do that, you know, maybe coupons for an ice cream or to go to a certain business or whatever? Um.
We have one with, uh, Clementine, they give all our, they're just gonna give all our kids free desserts.
Twins come in on Sunday, they got discounted.
But I think that, I think that if we can add that piece, that community.
Connect the community, yeah.
Yeah, right? It, it helps. Um, the drivers' training thing, I had a parent approach me before school started and ask me about the drivers' training. She was really disappointed that we didn't have it. And she continued to, um, contact, um, the school about it. I'm very, very happy to see that we have a grant for that. It is absolutely huge because everybody should have the ability to drive. Um, and there's, there should be no, um, reason that they can't. So, um, I'm going back to the showcase, 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 showcase our success. I don't see it nearly enough on social media, really do that a lot. Um, and then, um, that's my, that's my comments, I hope that's enough.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Um, thank you, thank you again. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Dr. McFadden, I'll keep mine brief tonight. Um, it was wonderful seeing all the great things that are going on in all of our buildings and how hard. It was wonderful seeing all the great things that are going on in all of our buildings and how hard everyone's working together. And I couldn't be happier about all of it. And I couldn't be happier about having you on board. You're doing great things. You were a great choice for us. And kudos to Dawn and Michelle over at Seminole. When you change the atmosphere so that the kids feel that it's warm and inviting and loving and homey and comfortable, they will come. And they have changed the culture there. So kudos to them. They're doing a great job over there. So those are my comments. Everybody have a wonderful and blessed Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Dante Walker.
Today was a a great meeting. Those presentations put on by our great leadership around the district really showcased the great staff that we have. With everyone coming together with the different ideas, with great energy, we really are able to help grow the whole town. Particularly during the secondary complex presentation, as many of you know, that math, NWEA, was really the highlight of the presentation for me as someone who likes math a lot, besides politics. I think that the the increase in enrollment throughout the whole district is a great way to showcase. And it is a great way to look at the change that we've seen in this little bit amount of time and that we can keep going. Also, we're, I'm looking forward to the many things that we have upcoming. And track season is about is about to approach, so get ready to see the schedule with Coach Wallace. And everyone have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. There leaves me. First of all, it's simple. Good job, Mr. Superintendent. Real good job. Our staff and our students and our teachers, they did a wonderful job. I did appreciate the showcase where they showed the transparency, they showed the good, the bad and the ugly. They also show, you know, where we at, where we stand. And for your number question, I believe we had about twenty percent of the student population, middle school and high school in the honor roll category. Because it was like thirty, thirty, thirty. We have three hundred and seventy students, give or take. There's a math guy over there, he can do the rest of it for me.
That's about.
About that. So with that being said, there's so many people to thank. I want to thank the parents, the people that came out tonight. Those are the ones I want to thank the most. And I also want to thank the students. So out of everything and everything and everybody and everybody, I'm going to thank the students. For the superintendents and everybody running the board, those are my comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Jay Walker and support by member Dee Walker. Non debatable? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon? Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker? Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry? Be adjourned.